I heard my name.
So do I. Because he walked, because he walked out where the names are and he told me I had to sit here. You have. We'll get it, we'll get it. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, April 21st, West Fargo City Commission Meeting. I'd ask that everybody in the room silence your cell phones as we prepare for the meeting. With that, please join the Commission in a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please call a roll?
Commissioner Jorgensen.
Present virtually.
Commissioner Zundell.
Here.
Commissioner President Dardis.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Let the record show that all Commissioners are participating, and Commissioner Rory Jorgensen is participating virtually. First order of business is to approve the order of the agenda. It has been distributed.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Zundell. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Olson seconds. It's been moved and seconded to approve the order of the agenda as distributed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next order of business is to approve the minutes of April 7th. Again, Commissioners, they have been distributed and in your packet.
Make motion to approve.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of April 7th. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next order is the item F, building permits. Commissioner Jorgensen.
I would need to recuse myself from voting on this, as the company I work for is one of the applicants.
Thank you, Commissioner Jorgensen. Commissioner Jorgensen has recused himself from building, or voting on the building permits. It has been distributed and in your packet.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Anderson moves to approve the building permits. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Zundell, seconds. Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question. On one of these, the second one end, it looks like there's drain tile going in for, the valuation amount was $208. I just want to make sure that...
Is that dollar amount correct?
Yeah, is the dollar amount, I mean, if it's not, if, I just want to make sure if we approve it and it's not the correct dollar amount, that that's not going to be a problem for the applicant.
Mr. Nelson, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. Yeah, if you want to let me know which one you're looking at there?
It's the second one down. I can show you right here, if you want.
I can certainly look into that one. I don't know the details of that specific.
Okay. If we approve it, are they good to go, or does it need to come off of this?
I would say it's good to go, and if we need to bring it back, we can, is maybe one suggestion.
Yeah, you certainly can. If it's a higher dollar amount, they can bring it back again and you can approve the delta.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the building permit approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next order... Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Our city administrator, Mr. Scott, is absent this evening as he's traveling and on vacation, so... Next order of business is consent agenda. Consent agenda, we have items A through P. Send your packet. Excuse me, Commissioner Olson, thank you. Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, second. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, items A through P. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Clarification, Commissioner Jorgensen, were you voting on affirmative or the negative?
Affirmative.
All right, thank you. My apologies, I need to slow down. We move on to the regular agenda. Item number one is public comment. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody registered for public comment?
We do not.
All right, we move on to public comment. Item number one on the regular agenda, we move to item number two, public hearings. We have no public hearings this evening either.
No public hearings.
Correct. So we move on to item number three. Item number three is 825-6, McManus State's Second Edition, a request for a conditional use permit to construct an oversized accessory structure within a rural estate zoning district, R-1E, and a request for a variance to reduce the required minimum building control line of the Cheyenne River Corridor Overlay District at 126 49th Avenue East, Lot 11, Block 1, McManus State's Second Edition. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you. So yeah, we have a couple of different things going on here, so I'll do my best to kind of orient the Commission with the two different requests that we have here. So just to start with, item three is a request for variance, the building control line of the Cheyenne River Corridor Overlay Zoning District, as well as a request for conditional use permit to allow an accessory structure to exceed 1,000 square feet within the R-1E Rural Estates Zoning District. This item does come to you with a recommendation for approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the subject property that we're talking about today is located at 126 49th Avenue East, which is along the inside curve of the Cheyenne River within the McManus State's development. The applicant is proposing to build a 1,800-square-foot accessory structure, which would partially encroach into the building control area of the Cheyenne River Corridor Overlay Zoning District. So I'll just scroll down here in your packet to the site plan to give you an idea of what's going on. There we go. So on the site plan included in your packet here, the building outlined in blue on the right-hand side of the screen is the proposed building. You can see the river setback distance shown in those lines on red. 100 feet is the closest line to the street there. So you see the building encroaches approximately halfway into that building control line. So the proposed building requires two different development entitlements. One is the conditional use permit in order for a building to exceed 1,000 square feet within this zoning district. The building will be a single-story and will be clad in exterior materials and match the exterior coloring of the existing single-family home on the lot, and the building is consistent with similar accessory buildings that have been approved and that have been constructed within this neighborhood as well. And so at the end of the day, staff has no concerns with the requested conditional use permit. The second entitlement, as I mentioned, is the request for the variance to the building control line, which is again that 100-foot setback from the river. As outlined in the city ordinances, the city commission may reduce the required building control line where it can be demonstrated through a soils analysis that soils are sufficiently stable within the building footprint or the building control area there. So to that end, the applicant has hired Ron InterTech to provide the soils assessment from a geotechnical engineer, which is also included as an attachment to the staff report in your packet. In this case, Ron InterTech does find that the soils are sufficiently stable to handle the proposed building. The geotechnical report has been reviewed by city engineering staff, and no concerns are noted by staff. A public hearing was held for this request at the April 15th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, at which the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended conditional approval of the proposed variance to the building control line with the condition that the applicant sign a waiver and release of liability agreement with the city, which is pretty standard practice for these types of variances. Additionally, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended conditional approval of the conditional use permit for the building to exceed the 1,000-square-foot maximum, with the condition that the owner sign and submit a conditional use permit agreement. So copies of both of these agreements are included in your packet, and the applicant has, you know, no issues, and the applicant has actually signed both those agreements. So with that, we have a two-part recommendation tonight, which again is a little bit unique because of the fact that the building control line is technically approved via the variance process. Variances are approved by the Board of Adjustment, and so we would be asking that the city commission convene in their capacity as the Board of Adjustment in order to approve the variance, and then also for the city commission in its normal capacity as a city commission to approve the conditional use permit. So two different recommendations from two different bodies essentially. So the request tonight would be to take one after the other as the Board of Adjustment and then as the city commission. So I know that's a little confusing, and I'm happy to provide more detail, but that's what I have for staff's presentation on this item, and I'm happy to provide more info to answer any questions on behalf of staff.
Any questions? Commissioner Zundell.
I noticed you said that other buildings of this size have been approved in the neighborhood. Do you, like, similar to twice what we allow normally? I mean, is that a pretty standard number?
I should say, just clarify, buildings over 1,000 square feet. I don't have the exact square footages of the other buildings in front of me, no.
So I guess in general, because this one's coming in at 1,800 square feet, does, I mean, is that atypical to have one that over?
Yeah, that's a good question. I honestly don't know off the top of my head the ranges of the buildings in the area.
Do we know what the use of this building is going to be for?
For personal use, and the applicant is present. Should you have any questions, I can certainly have the owner provide some information in that regard.
Mine's close to what Commissioner Zundell's is. In the past, when we've had these accessory buildings go over the allotted square footage, we've been told that the neighborhood's been reached out to and received any comments from them. Has that been done?
Yep, it's been done. We've received no comments from the neighborhood. Notification is sent out to property owners within 350 feet of the subject property.
Okay.
And there been no negative feedback whatsoever?
Staff has received no comments.
Commissioner Zundell.
With the size of a lot like this, how many people were notified within 350 feet?
Also a good question. Can we just zoom out to the aerial photo? It's not going to show you a whole lot, but... So just to give you a sense of, you know, the surrounding area, for the most part, it is predominantly a single-family, and so, you know, I would say most of the folks that you're seeing in this aerial image here would be within that 350-foot buffer. Don't have a scale on here, or whatever you do. So the scale at the bottom is 200 feet, including the black and the white portions of that scale, just to give you a sense of 200 feet, so... Two to three neighbors on each side, I'd say.
Is there going to be substantial trees removed that might affect the stability of the riverbank?
I'll let the applicant maybe comment on that one.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jeremy McGlaughlin, I'm a property owner, along with my wife. No, there's no trees along the riverbank that'll be disturbed at all. They're all within the 50 feet. There's one tree that'll have to be removed from about the middle of the lot, but it's sufficiently set back from the edge of the river. And just back to your comment, Commissioner Zundell, in the report, it does say that other structures approved in the past in McManus State's development have been 1,600 to 2,100 square feet. So it's in line with what's been approved in the past. Yeah, it's on page two of the staff report.
Additional questions, Commissioners?
What is the proper way to do this? What comes first?
Well, it's going to be two parts. I'm going to do the...
Same there. Brad, when you talk, can you lean a little closer to the microphone? It's tough to hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
The first action we'll take will be on the building control line, which will be the Board of Adjustment, so I'll gavel out of the regular agenda and go into the other. Is there any other discussion, questions of the landowner who's present and/or Mr. Nelson? Okay. We are removed from the regular agenda. We are now as the Board of Adjustment, and the purpose of the Board of Adjustment is on item 3, 825-6, McManus State's, for 126 49th Avenue East, Lot 11, Block 1, McManus State's Second Edition, where we will determine whether or not the Commission approves the building control line modification.
I make a motion that we approve.
Commissioner Zundell moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson seconds, and moved and seconded to adjust the building control line as represented in the drawings for 825-6, number three on the agenda for 126 49th Avenue East. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We now gavel out of the Board of Adjustment. We are back in the West Fargo City Commission meeting for April 21st. The question before us is the...
Conditional use permit.
The variance from 1,000 to 1,800 square feet on this building.
I make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Zundell moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Item number four is approval of the city administrator employment contract. We call on Sarah Gochelik, Director of Human Resources for the City of West Fargo. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Commissioner President Dardis and Commissioners. So once again, I have the final version of our employment agreement for the city administrator. This was sent out to you in one version, directly after the last commission meeting on, whenever the last commission meeting was, because I can't remember the date, and then it was sent to you again last week with the updated accrual balances to reflect the May 1st effective date that is now on the contract. So tonight, I am looking for you guys to approve it so that it can be signed and executed and finish it up, but if you have questions on it beforehand, I am happy to answer those.
Thank you, Ms. Gochelik. Commissioners, questions?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Zundell, seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the city administrator's employment contract. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number five is the Public Safety Annual Report, Police Department. Chief of Police of the City of West Fargo, Pete Nielsen. Good evening, Chief, and welcome.
Good evening, Commission President Dardis, fellow Commissioners. I stand before you tonight to present our annual 2024 report. As you can see in our report on page two, it has been launched today, but on page two, we have dedicated this annual report to the memory of our former police chief, Kenneth Hanson, who served nearly 20 years as a police chief here in West Fargo. So this year's annual report has been dedicated to Chief Hanson. I'm proud to report that there's been a 6% decrease in overall crime compared to 2023. There's a 16% decrease in crimes against persons, which is a very good thing here in our community. We had a little increase, excuse me, a decrease in crimes against property, and a lot of the crimes against property, the majority of that, when it comes in, we have a lot of identity thefts that has been, have been taking place, and as you know, we continue to educate the public. We continue to talk to the public to try to get them to be aware of these scams that are happening within our community. So we will continue to educate as we go along. The department has, excuse me, despite the decrease in overall crime, the department has responded to over 32,000 calls for service in 2024. That's a big number, because that is the largest number of calls for service that our agency has ever taken on, so we're proud to report that, even though that we're having more calls for service, that our crimes, overall crime has decreased. So with that, the 32,000 calls for service in 2024, I should advise you that that's a 15% increase since 2021, so it continues to move up as we, as our community continues to grow. Our officers continue to see an increased demand for law enforcement through our community, and we are seeing these increased numbers for service, calls for service. However, the police department is well-prepared for this. Our department continues to have a strong relationship with the community, and our residents are staying vigilant in our reporting crimes that they are seeing. So we're very excited to work with the community as we continue to grow. The, as the community continues to report these crimes, this has helped us solve these crimes and be able to bring this crime number down. We are currently adapting to meet the changing needs of our community and as a metro as a whole. These include programs such as the Lake Region State College Peace Officer Program. There were 17 students in the program, and as you may know, this program is sponsored with us, along with the Cass County Sheriff's Department. We host it here at the police department. So we graduated 17 students last year. That program is about to kick off again in May, and with hopes of another 17 to 18 possibly within that group, so we're excited for that. We have an additional comfort dog that was placed, K9 Clover. She was placed into the school district, and she is making an immediate impact with students that have disabilities, students that have needs that arise that allows them to get back into the learning environment by having the comfort dog come in and do what it's trained to do. We also have launched the Flock Safety Camera System, and we are nearly complete with that, and we are excited to come to the Commission here in the future and advise the Commission on some of these success stories that are already taking place. And the entire staff of the police department continues and proudly, to proudly and professionally serve our community. Our annual report highlights just some of the amazing things that our staff has done, and as you can see in the screen before you, our cops unit is extremely busy this time of year. We are going to be placing those community outreach officers out within the community, do certain events such as fishing. We're going to be at the lights to demonstrate some of the stuff we have, but I can say that our community outreach program is extremely excited for the summer, and we are honored to have that unit within our department. I said I would keep this brief, so in honor to continue to serve the West Fargo Police Department, I present you with the annual report, and once again, it's my honor to serve as a police chief, and I stand for any questions.
Questions for the chief? Thank you, Chief Nielsen. It was a great event when Captain Duro retired recently, last week, I believe it was, and a man that gave 30 years plus of service to our community, and he and his family got a well-deserved recognition for that service. I thank you, Chief, for bringing that forward to the public.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next, we'll have our Fire Department Annual Report from Fire Chief Dan Fuller. Good evening, Chief, and welcome.
Good evening, Commission President Dardis, members of the Commission. As you know, the 2024 Fire Department Annual Report offers a comprehensive look at our department's activities and achievements over the past year. I'd like to take a few moments to highlight some of the key takeaways that I am particularly proud of. I'm sorry, you're good? Okay. First off, our mission and impact. Our primary mission is to protect the lives and property of the citizens of West Fargo. This year, our dedicated team directly contributed to the saving of six lives and safeguarding approximately $14.4 million in property from the devastating effects of fires and other emergencies. This collective effort represents a total protection of $93.6 million of protection to our community, and furthermore, we continue to be responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars, achieving a commendable $12.72 return on every dollar of the Fire Department budget invested. Our... Sorry, I'm using the scroll. I can't see the downslide. Can you just go to the next one? Thank you. There we go. Oh, there it is. Okay. A significant program making a real difference in our community is the Community Health Alliance, and this initiative focuses on connecting individuals with the right resources to address their needs, ultimately reducing the 91, the demand on the 911 system for non-emergency situations. In 2024, our crews made 366 referrals to the CHA, leading to 192 patient assessments. This proactive approach is vital in enhancing the overall This proactive approach is vital in enhancing the overall well-being of our residents. Operationally, our department remained exceptionally busy, responding to two thousand seven hundred and eighty-three calls for service throughout the year, resulting in three thousand six hundred and fifty total company responses. As an all-hazards fire department, we are prepared to address a wide spectrum of emergencies from fire suppression and medical incidents to technical rescues and hazardous material situations. Our daily staffing model ensures that eleven firefighters are on duty around the clock, ready to respond whenever the need arises. I am also incredibly proud of the West Fargo Fire Department that the West Fargo Fire Department has been recognized as the first in the metro region to achieve Gold Helmet status. This designation by the National Firefighter Registry for Cancer demonstrates that over fifty percent of our firefighters are participating in the Crucial Registry, highlighting our commitment to understanding and mitigating the long-term health risks associated with our profession. Our K-9 team comprised of K-9 MICA and handler John Nieb continues to be an invaluable asset to our investigative capabilities. In 2024, they were deployed forty-nine times and dedicated three hundred hours of training, playing a crucial role in arson investigations and community outreach. Looking to the future, we are committed to continuous improvement through the accreditation process, where we are currently a candidate agency. This rigorous process will help us identify our strengths, address areas for improvement, and ensure data-driven decision-making to better serve our community. Furthermore, we are actively working towards our commitment to limit loss of life and property from fire and natural disasters by focusing on initiatives such as increasing our staffing per shift per shift and improving our first-year reliability across all planning zones. In closing, the West Fargo Fire Department Annual Report reflects the hard work, dedication, and professionalism of every member of our department. We remain steadfast in our commitment to serve the West Fargo community with excellence. Thank you for your ongoing support, and I'll stand for any questions at this time.
Thank you, Chief Fuller. Commissioners, any questions? Anyone? Thank you, Chief. We move on to item number six in our regular agenda, and that is to approve purchase of a forestry bucket truck. We call on Mr. Matt Andrick, Director of Public Works. It's a 2025 budget amendment. Mr. Andrick.
Good evening, Commissioner President, Commissioners. Tonight, this came about when we were going through our 2026 budget. We're getting numbers for our preliminary budget, and one of the big-ticket items at our forestry department, as we move forward with taking over the boulevard trees, we're looking at getting a bigger bucket truck. We have one right now, but that maxes out at about fifty feet, doesn't really work that well, and it's not rated for going around electrical. This truck that we're looking at goes up to seventy feet, which our tallest trees in town are eighty. So this will pretty much last us for quite some time, being able to reach those trees. It's one-handed operation, makes it easier for the guys to be able to get up there and work around the power lines and those higher trees as we move into like the EAB or just removing any kind of hazardous trees on the street and boulevard. So when we were getting numbers for the budget, we called around different places, and they came back at about four hundred thousand for the next year. But one of the things that they were kind of mentioning was, is we don't know what's going on with the tariffs, and what they had heard might be, depending on how that goes, might be another seventy thousand, depending on, you know, what happens with that. And then it was going to be a twelve to eighteen-month build. If they didn't have anything come off the line, it was going to be about that long. Within about two weeks after kind of those initial conversations, they came back and said, we had somebody cancel one of their orders. We have one that fits your spec in order that, you know, what you guys were looking for, for two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. And looking at that and the size of, I guess, the want to call it cost savings, but just the lower cost between purchasing at this one that is on the lot and we could be using it this year compared to next year, we felt kind of was worth bringing that forward. With that, being such a large purchase for a small budget, our budget in twenty-five for the forestry department was six hundred and sixty thousand. Going into next year, our preliminary numbers were right around one or about one million, and that was with that four hundred thousand of the bucket truck. You take that off, it gets down to that six hundred thousand mark again. So talking with the finance director, we have enough funds within the forestry fund right now to cover this purchase this year. And we have checking, we have about three or four more kind of somewhat large purchases this year that will come out of it. But even with that, we can cover everything and then still start getting towards more money in the reserves by the end of the end of the year. In that, I'll just ask for the, I guess, moving forward and approving a budget amendment for a purchase of the truck in 2025. I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Andrick? With regard to the existing truck that we have, is that a trade-in, or is that part of your resources that you'll continue to use being we're taking over the boulevard trees?
It's part of the resources that we're going to continue to have, because actually we, instead of trying to make this big expenditure, about a year ago, we, this was one of our streetlights, our electricians used this truck, and we just were trying to move it around. So we're kind of staggering some of those bigger purchases.
So, great point. You got to exactly where I wanted you to be. This is being used by other departments as well, our electricians.
They wouldn't be able to use this as well.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Matt? This does actionable item. As he stated, the purchase price of the same piece of equipment next year would be in 2026 would be four hundred thousand. The price for the truck that was canceled by a jurisdiction is two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and five twenty, eight hundred and five dollars and twenty-nine cents. A savings of
I'll make the motion to purchase the truck.
Thank you, Commissioner Jorgensen. I have a motion to approve the purchase of the truck. Is there a second?
Second.
I have multiple seconds. I have a second from Commissioner Anderson. We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase and do a 2025 budget amendment as outlined by Mr. Andrick. Is there a second? Excuse me. Is there any discussion? Even Katie looked at me like she wanted me to straighten out. So, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Andrick. Item number seven is Project Ninety Thirty-Six. It's the I-94 and Twenty-Sixth Street West. Dan Hanson, the city engineer, is presenting. Purpose of the discussion is to approve a purchase and rental agreement. Mr. Hanson, good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and Commissioners. A couple different times, August of twenty-three and November of twenty-four, we've discussed the potential purchasing of three separate properties owned by the Hazers, Dan Hazer and Dwayne Hazer. The purpose of the purchase would be to secure property that would be used for a future interchange up at Twenty-Sixth Street and I-94. And so it started at the resolution of necessity public hearing that we had for the Sand Hills Edition, where Dan Hazer came forth and protested or spoke against the special assessments to his property. And we were direct, staff was directed by the commission at that point to proceed in negotiating for the purchase of these properties. We've done that on November fourth. I set forth all the terms, conditions, and things that we had come down to. And tonight, we have in your packet four documents. Two of them are purchase agreements, and two of them are rental agreements. If you recall from the November fourth presentation, we have both of the purchase agreements. Dan Hazer owns two properties, and Dwayne Hazer owns the one property. And then by purchasing them, we're not evicting them right away after the purchase. There's an agreement that they would be able to basically, for a dollar a year, they would be able to rent the properties back from us for up to five years, for a minimum of five years, per this purchase agreement. With the amount of time it takes for an interchange to go through the federal highway and things like that, we would not be constructing those improvements anytime within the next five years anyways. So they would still live on the property, maintain the property, with the ability to move off at any moment in time. After four years of this, we would be able to evict them, giving them one-year notice. And then if it, say, we get to year number five, if we haven't terminated this agreement, then the agreement would just be extended for another year until we do evict the Hazers from the property. But we would have the ability to send that notice after year four. And so nothing has changed from the purchase price and the conditions that I had laid out in the November fourth presentation. So with that, I would entertain any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Hanson, Commissioner Olson?
Just, you've got two different prices listed in there in your write-up. Total purchase for the Hazer Ventures is nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and then there's one property owned by Dwayne is seven hundred and fifteen thousand. So we're looking at one point six million, right?
That is correct. Yep.
For the public transparency, is the City of West Fargo also absorbing the special assessments? Could you clarify that?
Yeah, yes, that's correct. Yep. As with any purchase of property, along with it comes the taxes that are, I'm sorry, the special assessments that are owed on that property. Those are always transferred with the with the property.
So these purchase prices do not include that dollar amount?
That is correct.
Very good.
And those dollars were on the November fourth, 2024 commission packet, if anybody wanted to go and look up the
Just wanted to remind the public of what we're doing.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anderson, second. We have a motion and a second for Project Ninety Thirty-Sixth, I-94 and Twenty-Sixth Street West, for the agreements with Hazer Ventures and Dwayne Hazer. Is there any further discussion?
If I could, just one more
Please.
point is that the intended, the economic development sales tax would be used for the purchase.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Hanson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number eight is project number twenty-two ninety-one, 2025 concrete pavement repairs various city locations, accept a bid and award a contract. Again, we call on Mr. Dan Hanson, city engineer.
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and Commissioners. This is an annual project that we do to basically repair panels of roadway that are cracked and faulting. And also added to this year's is a number of pedestrian ramps that we were adding to the project as well. We did open bids on April seventeenth. We had an engineer's estimate at the time of the bidding was one point five seven million, and the low bidder was all finished concrete incorporated in the amount of one point five million dollars. So they came in within estimate. Total estimated cost of the project originally in the CIP between the was one point five million dollars for the concrete repair plus three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That was for the pedestrian ramps totaling approximately one point eight to five million dollars. So we are underneath what we had planned for on that. All Finished Concrete is a good standing company in the in our community, and we look forward to working with them. And I would just ask for the commission to accept the bids and award the contract to All Finished Concrete.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Questions for Mr. Hanson?
I make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Zundell moves to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Anderson, second. Been moved and seconded to approve Project Twenty-two ninety-one for the 2025 concrete pavement repairs, to accept and award a bid to All Finished Concrete. And this dollar amount of one point, one million five hundred and seventy thousand was in our CIP for this year?
Yes, it was. Yes.
Very good. Commissioner Olson?
So we've got a bid amount of one point five million, but then you're saying that the total cost is one point eight three nine million. So how do we arrive at that?
That doesn't include, if there's additional costs for things that our staff is doing, it also doesn't include any bonding costs, for example, legal fees, administration, and soft costs like that.
Okay. So they're still going to do all of the work?
Correct. Yep. We, All Finished Concrete would be doing all the work for this.
But they're, we're only going to pay them their one point five million?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you.
Number nine, 2026 sidewalk improvements. Again, we call on Mr. Hanson, city engineer, to create an improvement district sixty-sixty-two, direct an approved engineer's report and authorize the notice of order to construct to be sent out. That doesn't make sense, but, Mr. Hanson, explain it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and Commissioners. This is a different project. Sidewalks fall under a different type of rules when it comes to the Sentry Code. And so there is a notice of order to construct to be sent out. Basically, what that is, is you identify properties that do not have sidewalk in front of them, and we, basically, it says, we are going to be installing sidewalk. So there's an order to construct that's sent out to the residents so that they have an opportunity, if they would like to, in this summer, to construct that sidewalk privately. We'll do an inventory at the end of the summer, and anybody who has not constructed the sidewalks on these empty lots would be added into the project. And so that would explain the notice of order. This is a project that we do every other year to fill in the gaps in the sidewalks for recently developed neighborhoods, as well as any other identified gaps that we find. One of the main reasons for this is pedestrian mobility and for ADA access. If there's somebody in a wheelchair going along and they come across a, they're going down the sidewalk, they come across a lot that doesn't have a sidewalk on it. There is no, the driveways that get you out onto the street are not ADA compliant, nor should they be. They're not supposed to be. They'd have to basically back up to the nearest pedestrian ramp and go onto the street. So this is really a safety improvement for the pedestrians, and we would just, I'd answer any questions that the commission would have.
Is this budgeted in your CIP?
This is project identified, but it is one hundred percent assessed. All sidewalk projects like this are.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Olson.
So you said that you would take an inventory at the end of the summer. So when would we, if, let's just say, none of them do this, when would we actually do the work?
Next year. This is, yeah, this is a 2026 project. We're actually getting out ahead of this even further than we have in the past. Many times in the past, for the sidewalk projects, we've issued that notice during the winter, and we've told property owners that they have, for example, until July fourth to get it constructed. And then anybody that hasn't constructed it by July fourth, then it would be constructed. Well, that in the past has lent itself to us producing plans and specifications, because you can't wait until July to put those together. So you put the plans and specifications together, and then you bid it out in the spring. Well, then, by the time July fourth gets there, some people have constructed them, and now you're working with the contractor to reduce their contract by what has been constructed. This is basically drawing a line in the sand, saying, we're giving everybody this summer to do that. At the end of the summer, we'll know everybody that has, everybody that hasn't. We'll be able to be able to put the bids out in a timely fashion in the best bidding environment in, say, January, February timeframe for the sidewalks to be constructed next year.
I suppose you could still run into the problem of next year, before we get our project going, somebody goes out there and pours a strip of sidewalk there before our crew gets there.
Yep, absolutely, and I totally expect that to happen. And I'm sure there's going to be contractors that plan on constructing their house in twenty-seven that don't want us to construct the sidewalk. And this project is a very fun project for engineering to deal with, with respect to both of those things. But we navigate it, and it's been something navigated in the past every other year.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve 2026 sidewalk improvements. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Zundell, second. Been moved and seconded to approve the 2026 sidewalk improvement to authorize the notice of order to construct. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item number ten, project number ninety fifty-four, ambiguity. Ubiquity Citywide Fiber Project. Mr. Hanson, the city engineer. Purpose of the discussion is to approve the construction agreement and public right-of-way license agreement.
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and Commissioners. Ubiquity North Dakota LLC, they're a utility company that they offer fiber infrastructure. And they have plans to enter into the Fargo, Morehead, West Fargo, Delworth communities and basically install fiber throughout the community. They've been negotiating the same type of agreements with Fargo. I'm not sure about Morehead and Delworth, but I know Fargo has been dealing with them on their agreements as well. And basically, what they do is, they would come and install the fiber everywhere. Now, because they're not the ones that are provide, what they do is, they sell space, they lease space in that fiber utility for companies to use it. So, they just own the fiber network, but they're not the one that would be providing the television service, or the communication service, or, or internet service through it. That would be a separate company that would lease space on their fiber network. And because of that, because they're not the utility company, there is no franchise agreement that they can be forced into for being in our, in our city. But what we do have the ability to do is to put together this, this right-of-way license agreement that identifies that the, the business relationship that we have with them. There is a 4% fee in this agreement with Ubiquity for any profits that they were making, or any payments that they're getting paid by companies to use their fiber network. They're going to, through this agreement, provide a 4% cost share to the city of West Fargo. So, that would be the, match the same that we would have for a franchise fee. So, that also gives them the ability to work within our right-of-ways and our easements. Now, one thing is, as they are, they're recorded with the, with the state, they have the right to be here and install these utilities. We have the right to regulate our right-of-way and set conditions. So, this right-of-way license isn't a license that's granting them permission to do business in West Fargo because that is what they're allowed to do because they are registered through the state. But what this does is, it sets up our agreement with them if, for the conditions that we're going to have on their, on their utilities that can, they're going to be installing. So, that's the public right-of-way license agreement. It was put together by Ms. Schmidt and Onsted. We have been including Onsted in, in all of our negotiations with Ubiquity. And then, the construction agreement, that's basically for, that's basically for the construction and the installation of all of this infrastructure. And what that does is, it's, it's going to be, generally speaking, probably at least two years worth of them being everywhere in town. Their intent is to get every household and every business in West Fargo a fiber option. And so, now, they're not going to be going up to the house for the service leave. They're going to be going through all of the right-of-ways. For the most part, they're going to be boring, and they're using local crews to do that. It's not like they're coming in with the Ubiquity Construction Crew to do it. They, they did ask us if we have some construction crews that install these type of facilities that we like to, to work with. They do intend to use local contracting firms for the installation. Obviously, they would have somebody in place to oversee the project. And at this point, the intent would be that the engineering department, right-of-way portion of the engineering department, would oversee all of the installation of these utilities. Included in the construction agreement is a payment, agreement between Ubiquity and the city that they would pay us for the hours that we spend being out observing and managing the construction of the installation of the project. What we're approving, asking for approval tonight, this does not mean, once it's approved, they're able to just show up and start installing the utilities. They still have to go through our permitting process and submit up to a certain amount of sites that they want to work at. That would come into our right-of-way department, just like any other permit. There would be a meeting on site determining exactly where everything would be installed, the method of construction that they would use, whether it's open trench, boring, and things of that nature. And then, we would only allow a certain amount of sites to be opened because they, they've stated that they're fantastic at restoration, and I'll, I'll believe that. And then, also, we won't issue them another permit to start until we're convinced that they are very good at restoration. So, the intent isn't for them to come in, tear up an entire area, move on to the next, and neglect what they just worked in. We're going to make sure that they are following up behind those construction crews with restoration crews. So, it's, so, that would explain both the public right-of-way license agreement, as well as the construction agreement. And with that, I would entertain any questions.
Questions for Mr. Hanson? Commissioner Olson?
So, we've already got similar fiber optic cable going through, like Midco and, I suppose, others come to mind. So, what, who will they sell this to? Isn't already here?
I'd ask Benji, if, Benji's our right-of-way manager. I don't believe we have fiber to the community, if you could make mention of that, Benji.
Commissioner, President, Commissioners? Yeah, so, most of the infrastructure that's in the ground now for, like, communications is, is like, is coax and old copper lines. So, there's, there's not a lot of fiber to your home options.
Gotcha.
This kind of brings the new technology to the area.
Okay, thank you. I just made the assumption that there already was, so.
Additional questions? Which department oversee, has the oversight of this?
Engineering Department.
So, when you talk about reclamation? So, if it's a grass area, they're going to reseed it and
That's correct.
do that? If it, and they're horizontal boring, what if they're killing trees?
Everything that they need to do, they would be responsible to, to replace. Now, for the most part, if you think about it, just putting in hole boxes, standard like the cable TV coming in.
The open trench dig.
Yeah, we don't, we don't anticipate that there's going to be much for any, they're not going to locate any of their pad boxes where a tree is. That's why Benji would meet them out in the field to site-locate where their boxes would go. And for the most part, our intent is to have them bore between it, so there's less disturbance. There will be some situations, I'm guessing, that open trench will be necessary. But every, every effort will be made to avoid landscaping trees and things like that. And our first goal is to keep them in easements. And if they can't be in the easements, for example, if there's already 10 different utility companies in there and there's just no room, then they would be able to go out into the right-of-way.
Thank you. Additional questions for Mr. Hanson? Again, I will remind you that we're approving a construction agreement and the public right-of-way license agreement, where there's two items to this, to this item.
I'll move to approve.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Zundell, second. We have a motion and a second for Project Number 9054, Citywide Fiber Project, to approve the construction agreement and the public right-of-way license agreement. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Mr. Hanson, you're a busy guy tonight. Item number 11 is the Improvement District Number 2290, the 2025 Public Works Mill and Overlay. Purpose of this discussion is to reject all bids and authorize a re-advertising for bids to rebid the project. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and Commissioners. We did have for this project, which is the 2025 Public Works Mill and Overlay Project, we did open bids on April 10th at 10:30, and we did have one bid that was received. Border States Paving was the only bidder, and in the amount of $800,898.55. That bid did come in underneath the engineer's estimate of $822,924.25. At the time that we were bidding, we were under the impression that our trucks would not be allowed to go into the state of Minnesota to pick up asphalt produced by companies that produce asphalt, for example, in Morehead and Delworth and Saban and in those areas. So, basically, when we bid this project out, there was only one supplier, Border States, that produces asphalt to our specifications in the, in the, the city that, that was able to bid this project. And again, at the time, Public Works had been told by the DOT that we didn't have the ability to send, I, I don't know the full details of it, but we were told that we couldn't send our trucks into Minnesota. It was towards, basically, the, almost the day of the bidding. There was a lot of discussion about this. And Public Works staff, that is in charge of fleets, made a lot of phone calls, talked to the DOT, talked to their supervisor, their supervisor, who were giving the same responses. And eventually, got to somebody else's supervisor, who did eventually give the Public Works the knowledge that we can actually go up to 20 miles into Minnesota to be able to pick up materials. And so, given that, even though we did get a, a bid that was at our estimate, it basically was a sole source that was able to bid this project. So, what I'd like to do is reject that bid, even though it's a quality company with a, with a bid that meets our engineer's estimate. I'd like to reject that bid and reauthorize us to bid the project with the condition that any asphalt being produced that we would go and pick up would be within 20 miles of the state of North Dakota proper, within the state of North Dakota. That would open up additional suppliers to be able to bid the project, which could lend itself to, to better prices and therefore less special assessments to the community areas that we're doing the work in.
One question.
Commissioner Jorgensen, go ahead.
When would you like to try to rebid this, Mr.?
There's a, there is an ad for bid. We would like to basically send it in to rebid it right-of-way. We would have to advertise it for two weeks, open up bids. After, it would be in the paper, I believe, next Wednesday. We would open up bids two weeks after that, and then bring it forth, the recommendation to the commission at the following commission meeting.
I appreciate the city doing their due diligence, so I will make the motion to rescind the previous bid and rebid the project.
Second.
I have a motion to rescind in a second, to rescind the action taken at a previous West Fargo City Commission meeting with regarding the, the bid for District Number 2290. Mr. Hanson?
May I make a point of clarification? We're actually asking to reject the bid, not rescind any thing. So, the, the motion would need to be that we would reject all bids and authorize the re-advertising for bids.
Is it all right with a second to change that?
You know, I, I think so.
Commissioner Jorgensen, is it all right for that clarification for you to approve?
Absolutely, thanks for correcting me, Mr. Hanson.
Yep.
Thank you. Before we continue, Ms. Schmidt? Could you tell me, is there any legal obligation that we have when we, when we estimated this and all? When the bid came in from the one contractor? Have we, any vulnerabilities here from that, from that contractor?
No, the city has the authority to reject all the bids from the bid opening.
Very good, thank you. Okay, we'll take another motion, Commissioners?
Are we all good on motions?
We still have to.
There's been a motion and a second. It'd be time to vote.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, all your correspondence has been distributed to you in your mailboxes. So, if, unless you've received something individually. Anything on correspondence, anyway? Okay, any non-agenda items any commissioner would like to bring forward at this time?
Just one.
Commissioner Olson?
That, the last item we did before this one with the fiber optic cable and talking about the franchise fees, is there any, I know they're not a public utility, but like DirecTV and others that are providing services, like internet services and cable services, is there anything that could, you know, is that just out the window? Or is that something that other cities do, and we're just not doing it?
There, there are other high-speed internet dollars. There's, there's Starlink, there's the, the satellites, the, this is just another option. However, this is a hard-wired fiber optic cable that would allow some very high-speed connectivity through it that is lacking, I would say, in it. But there, there are still other providers. And I know, for example, Ubiquity, they own another company named Fiber First. And that's a telecommunications company that would come in and be the one offering high-speed internet. They would be subject to a franchise agree, agreement and things. But, so, again, Ubiquity just installs the, the tunnel and
Right.
other, I mean, Sparklight could come in and buy, you know.
They could, yeah. But I was just curious, like, for DirecTV, they're providing the same services as a Midco. But we're not, we're not collecting a franchise fee from DirecTV, but we are from Midco. So, is that a lost revenue source there, or, or are they just off limits? Is what my question is.
Well, they, they really don't use our utilities. And they're not in our own way.
They're still operating in our city.
Yeah, so, I, I guess I don't know the answer to.
That was just my question. I didn't expect an answer tonight. But that was just something I thought of when we were discussing this. It's like, is that something that we're, cities are losing out on?
We'll do a little research on that. Mr. Hanson? Would you please do, do that research for us? Any other non-agenda items any commissioner would like to bring forward? Any department head have anything you'd like to bring forward this evening? Commissioner Anderson?
Move to adjourn.
Mr. Zundell? You stand adjourned.